Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Monday, November 18th School Committee Meeting. Tonight's regular meeting, the agenda is going to be, we're going to talk about the School Committee pending vacancy, the high school band trip. I know, I think we're gonna, well, we'll bring it up, but we'll probably table that. The BYOD presentation that we've been talking about for awhile and what's happening at the high school. Future school committee meetings and the schedule for that, and that's it. So, we'll have public input. So with that, we will, I think we're gonna table the June 17th to 13, 2013 regular meeting minutes, and we will get right into the School Committee vacancy update from Dr. Marsden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As we talked about last time, there's a process that we need to follow either through the, through the Medfield Public Schools Policy Manual and also the town as well. So I had a chance to speak to Mike Sullivan, the Town Administrator, and he let me know the process going forward. So what we need to do is send a letter to the Board of Selectmen, and then they will contact Tim, and then they'll do a joint meeting and appointment. So there's a whole timetable that goes along with that. So at this point, once Tim signs this letter tonight, then we'll send this to the Board of Selectmen and we'll advertise tomorrow. So we kinda had to wait until that, that all took place before we could, we could advertise. But Mike didn't seem to have an issue with it. He thought it was, you know, pretty standard, so we could, we could move ahead with that.
Sounds good. The next item of business is the high school band trip approval, which I think we're tabling until, for the, till December 16th.
Till December 16th. Thank you.
And then, Robert, if we're ready to start the BYOD presentation?
Good evening. Tonight, we're going to share where we are in our BYOD journey. It's kind of hard to believe that we left this part talking about two years ago, and now we're, Neil, over in my here, we're only two months in, even though it seems like it's been a lot longer. So, we've got a couple of teachers here, we've got some students here, so tonight, I'm gonna just kinda review a little bit of where we've been and what we've been doing lately with it. Neil Sonnenberg, our technology integration specialist, who's been a huge player in getting it off the ground here at the high school, talked a little bit about what he sees working with teachers and students every day in the classroom. And then we have two of our teachers here with a couple of students, and they're actually gonna show you what they're doing in the classroom and what they're doing. So, as you know, we've been really emphasizing the professional development for this initiative, and we do a lot of homework, and talking about the schools in terms of what they did to launch their programs. And I felt that every time we walked out of the school, I had a sense I was all about professional development. Different teachers prepared to teach in this type of environment. And as much as we wanted to kinda get things rolling last year, we knew we had to slow down a little bit to make sure it was prepared. So, last year, 23 of our freshman teachers began their training, I think we had our first training in April. Then that took place over some oven hours and work over the summer. We gave them iPads before the end of the school year. And over the last couple of months, we've been working with ed tech teachers, who have been a great resource for us. In fact, the teachers have pulled a workshop today, one of managers in the half, they're up here. So that's gone well. I think that is Neil will talk a little bit during a minute. There've been some challenges that we faced with professional development, like when you do initiative, but, you know, for the most part, we're able to work out what we need to work out, and able to deliver the type of instruction everyone can learn. We started communicating with our families almost a year ago now, letting them know that, that were faithful families at the time, that this was sort of coming down the road. And we held a couple of events, assemblies in the fall and the spring in preparation for this, communication with families throughout the summer. We started meeting with students, eighth grade students last spring. We set up some digital citizenship courses and modules that they took over the summer in preparation for, for our initiative as well. We've been doing surveys with our families and our students to try to really get a sense of the types of devices that we're gonna bring in. Neil will share a little bit of that. And now that we're a couple ones into the actual program itself, we're gonna be sending a survey out to students and parents probably next week or two to get their feedback on what their experience is going on. So that's gonna be coming down the road as well. So, again, like anything, we've had to work through a few challenges. It's just been to see the diverse levels of learning that we have, not only with students, but also with the teachers in terms of their individual skills. Today was sort of, that was highlighted again, when one of the teachers, an ed tech teacher was here, we're both working, and you can definitely see certain teachers are flying with it, ready to go, and others still really good understanding of the basics and getting a sense of, you know, how this is incorporated in the classroom. So, my sense, and Neil feels as well, that we've come a long way, even with our teachers that are kind of at that basic level. And I'm very excited to see what this is gonna look like in the spring. We've told the teachers, all 23 of them, it's frightening that, as this may sound to some of them, but in the spring, they're gonna be the technology experts in the building. They're gonna be working in this type of environment, five periods a day, 100 minutes days during the school year, so they're really on the front lines of this. So, I'm gonna introduce Neil Sonnenberg. Neil's gonna talk a little bit about sort of his perspective as, as the person who's really worked closely with the teachers and preparing this for this, and I'll come back up and if you have any questions, you can leave it up to him.
I'm Neil Sonnenberg, and we are the technology specialists here at the high school. And a couple of things I wanted to talk to you about tonight, really, what does the BYOD classroom look like? What tools are we using in those classrooms? And then, I'm gonna reiterate a little bit about some of the training they've had. Really, what I think is the most important is the impact of some data on teaching in those rooms. That's what we're all up here for, and that's what our teachers do best, or that job. And also, I think it's important to look at some of the challenges that we battle on the web. So, as advertised, we did a survey of what the devices actually look like in the classroom. And this is as of, I think they did it up this afternoon, so this is right up the presses. And if you can see from here, we've got about 70% of our devices are tablets, and 30% are laptops. And we did an initial survey last year, the numbers were pretty close to that, so the, what we expected and what we actually got, we're pretty close in numbers. But what that means from a teaching perspective is that if you have a class of 25 students, you're gonna have seven laptops and probably eight little tablets. But within that, you're looking at eight different devices. So, teaching a BYOD environment is not easy, and this makes it a little bit more difficult. So that's one way to look at the classroom, is all the different devices. Or you can look at it like this. And it won't be a quiz, but just pay attention to these pictures and see what maybe some commonalities as we spoke through each. Yes.
Beyond the yellow? Beyond the yellow shirts they have on?
Yeah.
Okay.
What do you notice in those pictures? Besides, you have a few with yellow shirts on.
They all have pencils and like some kind of writing device, other than just their tablets or whatever they're using. They all have their books out, pencils in their hands while they're, it's kinda funny.
Is that what you think of, when you think of a BYOD classroom?
No.
And I didn't either. And this is, this is, I didn't, you know, these aren't staged pictures, because yes, they were on the same day, and they were probably three or four different classes. But every picture, you've got students, a pencil, more or less a paper. You see that in this, this collaboration set up in the classroom. So things aren't really changing, what's changing is how they're learning. They're still talking to each other, and I can sit in there on their devices, still 25 individual students, they're working together as teams, they're learning together as teams, and there's problem solving as teams, which we'll talk about again in a minute. So how are these devices being used in the BYOD classroom? So, one of the things that we're seeing is the ability to do these virtual field trips, and assuming this is work, so I have to pick up the second element. Yep, I'll show you a quick. So this was in Mr. Woods' class, and this was probably within the first week that we were, sorry, I get a little busy, but this is the Palace of Versailles, so they were studying in the history class. It's not an iPad, nothing special, I don't think there is anything, they can look at the ceiling, they can look at the sign, they can look, zoom in on the statues, and a lot of these have hotspots on them either. You can actually click. Now I get more information about devices. This is just one room in the Palace of Versailles. And again, is this super instructional genius? No, but when students have this in their hand, it's very different than you watching it, sorry, I'm gonna cut this off. Um, you're watching it on the dip screen, it's different when you're in your hand and you can figure out what you wanna see, you can navigate, look up at the ceiling, so if you're walking through it.
Oh. We've paid for that software to see that.
Okay, so one of the other things, you know, the teaching term's called dip sticking, and, you know, what that means is that while you're teaching, you can find out how your audience, how your students are doing. So, just some great online tools that, you know, that allow you, as you're giving a presentation, for example, I could throw a slide in here that asks a multiple choice question that says, what percentage of, it says, what percentage of the devices are laptops? To see whether you were paying attention. And I'm still gonna do that, I did. So, I mean, and I get that feedback right away, and why that's important is, five 25 students, I can't find out where everyone's at at one point. If I do these, these little check-ins, I don't have to stop class, I don't have to say, "How are you doing?", I can just give it, administer it, I can see the results at any time during or after class. So as a teacher, that's really important, getting this polling and student response information. Collaborative tools such as Google, which we'll talk about a little bit more today, really help with presentations and papers, and you saw that in some of the pictures. And I think one of the greatest things is, as we've moved into Google Drive, is this idea of digital portfolios. So even though we're only talking about freshmen, I want them, when they're seniors and applying to colleges, to be able to look back at that amazing essay they wrote from Mr. Terry's class and be able to access that by typing in the word "ninth grade" or whatever the essay was titled. So by creating these digital portfolios, we're setting up students for success when it comes to applying to colleges and even beyond that. So, there's a lot going on, on how they're being used. As far as how will they be used, this is just my projection. I think we're gonna see a lot more with real-time student-teacher collaboration. And one of my thoughts is, it'd be great if we got rid of the after-school, we'd have students come to help, would just say, "Hey, let's do it at 7:00 o'clock at night, we'll have, you know, we'll do this online, we'll chat, blah, Facebook, whatever it's gonna be." There's a lot of different ways to integrate that. Students as creators of content, this is one of the things we're really looking at now, is we've kinda handled the first steps of BYOD, which is, we're doing some quizzing online, we're doing some posting, but we haven't really done a lot of creating. So you're gonna see a lot more with multimedia, so you can use video, using pictures and audio to create content that hopefully will get out there on the web. One of the things we studied this summer in the modules we were talking about is this idea of a positive digital footprint. So we want students to put information out there on the web that'll give them a bigger web presence, whether that's for Medfield only, whether that's without the world, you know, we can free that out at a later time. But students need to know that their work's important, and creating a digital footprint is equally important. And I also think about collaborating with students outside of Medfield. You know, if we're studying about, you know, French students are learning, who wanna learn to speak French, why don't we collaborate with schools in Canada, why don't we collaborate with France, so we can actually have discussions back and forth? So I think there's gonna be a lot of this coming down the pipe. So, most importantly, the impact on student learning. Here's what I've seen, and we saw this again in some of the pictures, student collaboration has increased, student engagement, you give them a device, they're clearly more excited, and they work better when they're more excited. Organization, we're gonna talk about in a minute, I think Jarrett's gonna talk about it as well, in terms of how do we keep students organized with all their digital life that is going on now? And also, problem-solving skills. Students are working with each other now to solve problems that teachers can't solve. So a lot of times, when teachers have a problem in the classroom, they turn to their students, say, "How do I fix this?", whether it's an actual, can it on the internet, or whether it's a, "What would be a better way for me to deliver this, so you can understand it better?" So, we're seeing a lot more of that. And teacher collaboration, because of sharing ideas with each other now, which has changed a lot more because of BYOD. And, you know, the one thing I don't think we can, you know, set aside is that teacher workload has gone up. That's had an impact, because this is, you know, some teachers are teaching one BYOD class, and we're teaching four, and it's just one other thing that they have to do. So, it's had a, it's had an impact there. So, real quick, I wanna give you a quick update on Google Calendar, Mr. Terry, and Jarrett's gonna talk a little about this also. But, we talked about organizing students. So, I think it's a good picture here, it's, Jarrett's picture from a while ago, from my presentation that I asked you. You can see, what we're trying to do is keep students organized. This is his Google Drive account, nice and clean, even quality. Teacher perspective, here's my different classes. Within here, we're gonna see in a second what that looks like. Go back to Jarrett, he's got an English 9 folder, and for those of you that are familiar with Google Documents, he's got this little icon here, which means this is shared. And anything he puts in that folder, Mr. Terry can see. If he has stuff he doesn't wanna see, he keeps it here in his work in progress folder. This is Mr. Terry's class, English 9, these are all shared with our former students. And what that ends up looking like in a paper is something like this. Okay, this is the same paper that Jarrett would've written on this paper, submitted digitally, Mr. Terry's got excellent feedback from him here, and now we've got a dialogue back and forth between the two. Okay, so training, as we've talked about, conducted by a ed tech teacher, they're thought leaders in, in working with iPads and BYOD and all the technology that's going on. They've been training us both face-to-face and online over the course of school year, and they're really focused on improving student learning. They know it's not about the device, they know, you know, it's about the teachers and the classrooms, and that's what matters. Devices secondary. What they are doing is, is allowing us to learn new tools that allow the teaching to be better, allow the students to learn in a different way. So what are some of the challenges? I don't know what this picture, you know, probably, did you see what that is? I had to make it small. It's a smashed iPad, unfortunately. So that was our first pad, it was probably about four weeks in. So, I think more than two or three, a few or three devices or so, so this, huh?
No case.
No case, right. So they were warned about getting cases and all that good stuff. But, so some of the challenges have been, you know, Wi-Fi, it's for, you guys may have heard this, it was a challenge for us as teachers and also for some of the students, and some of it's just the load of the network, and other, other times, it was just a matter of logging in correctly. Sometimes, we don't know, it is user error. So, I would say, in a normal day, in a normal class, the students are probably logging in for one or two minutes at a time, they're supposed to do so. Managing student devices, as we saw right here, some times today, they can't do that. Other challenges, you know, the difference from the middle school to here is this lack of common playing time, so it's hard for some of the BYOD, BYOD users to find time to meet with each other. Keeping students organized, keeping students organized, we can do the best we can to set up the folder for them as people and really work with them on organization, but ultimately, they need to figure out a way, or we need to work with them, so that they can stay organized, not just for this year, but this is for the year and beyond. And what's, what are the strategies for that? We also need to ensure that students have requisite technology skills. I'll park on a second. So this program, as Robert said, isn't as infancy. Two months is all we've been doing, and it does feel like it's been a lot longer than that. So, as I keep telling the teachers, I was involved last year with iPad pilot, and, you know, what it looked like in May is not what it looked like in November, so we do need to be a little bit patient in terms of our expectations and what we're doing in the classroom. So, I mentioned technology difficulties. So one of the things that happened this year is, we had the foresight to create a student help desk class. Students signed up last year, there's 12 students in the class, Jarrett is here representing the help desk, and Mr. Terry, he's one of the students. And what I like about this class is that it's freshman through senior, and they're all pretty much on equal footing, even though they have different technological skills. Students are learning about customer service skills, it's not just about being technologically savvy, it's about how do you deal with people, how do you deal with customers, how do you write documentation that the average person can read? So they're learning that in Mr. Earth's class, and students are supporting other students who are supporting teachers. And one of the best things I've seen from out of this, we've got a lot, we've got a lot of our trustful parents, you know, my, my son, my daughter, struggling a little bit, there's someone that can meet with them one-on-one. So I know Jarrett has a tech flight that he works with once a week for a half an hour, and we've got three or four other students that I meet one-on-one. So the student help desk is then really helpful for having those one-on-one conversations, and also just helping all over the building. So with that being said, I'm gonna take it over to the beginners, students and teachers, so we can hear what's really going on.
Hello.
Hello.
English teacher here. The BYOD program has been wonderful, and what's been so wonderful about it is how seamless it really has felt. You know, the core nature of a class has not changed. We're still in my class, reading literature, responding to literature, looking at vocabulary, and grammar. We're still discussing literature. What's happened is, we now have tools that enable that to get to those 21st century skills. And we can also, Claire's stating that a program is only as successful as its participants, and a lot of the credit to this program's success goes to the students, because they've been so eager, so helpful. It's really the foster of this wonderful sense of community in our classrooms, where it's just meeting over a tear day, and, "How do I take this from Evernote to Google Docs? How do I troubleshoot getting through the Sonic wall onto the internet?" So it's been really wonderful. The amount of support from administration, and Mr. Sonnenberg and other IT folks in the building, it's been great. So what I'm going to talk about today, tonight, is using Google Docs and Google Drive in the classroom. So, as Neil told you, we have students set up with school-run Google Drive, uh, Google Drive accounts organized by period in class. I have my own Google Docs and Google Drive organized by my classes and students. And just for that, it's wonderful. There's not this sense that, you know, that that paper can get lost somewhere in the biology binder, and it's mixed in with your notes on the Louisiana Purchase, it's all organized, pretty common sense organization, because it takes like a few seconds, so there's not that, it's 11:30 at night, I'm typing my lab recorder, my paper on the most dangerous page, it's due tomorrow, and it is gone forever. You've all been there. Really using Google has ameliorated that whole process in a wonderful way, at least from my perspective. What I like about using Google Drive in classrooms, I've found it has the writing process, far more of a conversation between the student and I. The student's able to submit their work, and in real time, I've even had kids, they're on Google Docs, and they can see me commenting on their paper, which is very interesting and wild. So Jarrett can see, like the student, yes, this is perfectly formatted MLA heading, my comment corresponds to that. If you click on it, you see that my comment is there, and so on and so forth. So instead of a lot of handwriting, and crowding the page, and circling, and is this a hierarchical or is this a comment, it's all there, in typing. I also find there's something, maybe it's just me, but it's, you know, taking a comment. After I get the idea clearer and clearly, I find I can put more commentary in, which is always a great thing for students. One of the best things I have found with this is the speed, where students can get their work back, and I was doing this at 8:34 a.m. on October 8th. As soon as I graded it, Jarrett could see, he didn't have to wait until the next time I classed it, or until all the students were graded, he gets that immediate feedback. And also, because it's on his device, his personal Google account, it's not that behind you, but behind you, it's between the two of us, we choose, and mom, it did awesome well, what she did, it's on his paper, that's great, but it's really become his academic property, so it was a wonderful thing. The other great thing is all of his papers are in Google Drive account, so if you're next one, you can go back and you see. It's just, if I sound really excited about this, I really am, it's pretty, it's very great. The other thing that I just tried last week is, as a teacher, I created a DocuWitt's view for a test, I shared it with them, I put the big letters, it's not homework, we're gonna do it in class. So instead of 25 people in class maneuvering, looking up at the board as I'm typing the notes, getting it on their physical keyboard, looking in the text, and all that information coming in, and they had the right to have a paper on, and they always do that. All they had to do was go through the material, I had observed the secretary typing, it was up on the episode, and they all had the exact same class of notes. If someone was passing, they would have the exact class set of notes. And then Sunday night, "Oh, I got that test, I'm passing with the Monty Otto, oh, I know there's gonna be stuff on the device, where's that worksheet?" It's in the library. It would not be lost. And I'm very excited about that process, kind of taking the workload off of the students, and really giving them that time to process, to contribute, to create, to put back the classroom to be. But it's been a wonderful experience for me. How it's been up to Jarrett, in terms of how it's been for you?
Well, the Google Drive has been so easy, because all you have to do is just click a share button, technically mailing, and Google, Mr. Terry, gets my paper. And then, a couple days later, I see the title says "graded", I just go in at the last page, it says "graded", I check my grade, that's it. So, in class, when we work on this, we have two other people who hand our paper. They also comment on it, and I can click resolve, to say that I fixed my problem, and it's highlighted, and it all kind of stands out, and when I fix it, I'm done, and I just send it right to Mr. Terry.
And it's, yeah, it's been great, I can review the comments if I want, or if I need to, um, last notes go up that way. And again, it's so quick, and it's so wonderful that way.
Is this happening, like, in pretty much all the classes?
Um, most classes, the one that I really don't use it, has more to do with math, because math, you can't really do equations and problems on technology, it's gotta be built on. Really use it in biology, that's the most.
We started rolling it out with the BYOD teachers, and we kinda started with teachers that wanted it first, but it takes time to go to the class set of folders once. And we're just kinda spreading, like, not wildfire, but slowly moving up, even, this is not just a freshman, you know, you're even getting into the other classes also, so all the students now with Google account. Because the teachers are like, you know, "I'm ready to use Google", that's when we go into the class, set up the folder, and, you know, more and more classes happen. So I would say, for anyone, it's not seven out of seven classes, but a lot of them are probably four, five, I would say by the end of the year, we're gonna be close to.
It was moving down, same, like, under middle school, we were doing it too, and she's not in, we've created iPad folder. How much pressure do you feel to use the devices any given day?
Who would say I've ever felt pressure? I mean, you always want to kind of deliver the product, or the technology, or the tools, and later put a best serve the student, so there's certainly always that in mind. It's more just, here's this new venture. This is the way the world is going, this is the way the workplace is going, and truly we're contracting to a more digital age. And it's just, how can this work in my classroom? And so, I find that it solves a lot of problems, in terms of, say, having none with notes, or class worksheets, it's all in one pump. So I will find it's been more, I think, how can we use the app? Oh, this is gonna be great to just kind of do this digitally. I haven't yet, I feel pressure to use it. And as I said, it's, I'm amazed at how much I don't think, "Oh, I have to integrate technology", or say, "Hey, let's do it this way." And even my sophomores have voted to do, the future papers, be a Google Doc, and show them the future. All right, and then we do the next one, and they're, they're driving forward.
And it's not like, if you leave your iPad at school, you're gonna have a difficult time if you're recording at home. This is all stored on a cloud, so your desktop computer, your laptop, you can still access it from home. So it's not like if you leave your iPad, "Oh no, I can't finish my, my document", you can just finish it up at home, and just share it with.
That's great.
Is, by the way, Neil, I mean, I've, you've, every, Jeff and I talk about it a fair bit, and your name comes up a lot in a very positive way, so thank you for all the work you've done. I know it's e-difficult getting all this stuff going, and the connectivity issues that were in the beginning of the year are sort of getting sorted out, or feeling like...
We're working on it, yeah. I mean, they're, it's very temperamental, I think, if you can put a way to describe it. I've talked to Dr. Marsden about it, and it's just something that we're gonna, you know, really solidify over the next, you know, couple of months or so.
We're meeting again on Thursday to try to address it, again, so.
And I think, I think what, in fairness to our tech department, I think when you bring in a lot of different types of devices, you know, a fix for one device isn't always a fix for the other, but you're getting six of the devices, so it's just kind of working like through that. Definitely a lot better than it was early on, and, and it is why it's a pilot, you know, we're not doing it in the next week, well, we're working through it, and I expect it to be a lot better.
Robert, the communication with parents, I thought you'd, you'd had recently a meeting, and how did, how did that go with their feedback to you on how it's...
We haven't met with the freshman parents since, well, we met with them right before school.
Right.
Most of things, just, it's, what we haven't done yet, which is what we're gonna do in the next couple of weeks, is actually get their feedback, like, now that you've used it for a couple of months, what have you seen at home? And we haven't gotten that from students and teachers yet, you know, we wanted to kind of get this thing off the ground, get it going. So we're very interested in getting their feedback as well, I'll work on it at home.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of students are really bad, and Jarrett's a good example, someone who's really taken advantage of, of, of... who's really taking advantage, uh, of what we're throwing out there, but there are also, you know, we have students that aren't, who's, you know, get the benefit of it. So, uh, it's important for us to really understand, you know, the parent's perspective.
Just one thing to add about Jared and Helpdesk, you know, we did the, um, some of the training with the folder setting up with other freshmen, I had Jared and two other of the, things for other freshmen from Helpdesk come in, so we were, myself, two other freshmen, three freshmen, working with the other, twenty freshmen that have problems with the folder, so really a good experience all the way around. You guys are smart as wigs, I mean, they know much more than I do, as far as the technology, and, you know, now, you know, selfishly, they're taking some work out of my plate. Uh, so it's really been a positive experience. Jared, anything else you wanna add on Helpdesk?
Um, it's, people have come in with problems, and we have built tutorials for all the devices that people are bringing in, and we just print off copy and hand it to them, and they're in and out of there in a few minutes. So they need to take that home and share with other people, so if they have the same problems, it's easier to fix.
Yeah.
That's great.
Really, well, well, it's, I'm, you know, doing any change like this is, this kind of comprehensively is certainly gonna have its moments, so I'm, I commend you guys for kind of, like, keeping your patience and your wits about you as you move through it. Does anyone, is that, do you...
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
So kind of the tool that I've been using, uh, has a really great replacement for student brainstorming. In the Spanish classroom, it's really important for them to trigger the vocabulary that they know prior to beginning a new unit. Um, so what I've done this year is I've created different walls on Padlet for them to do group brainstorming, individual brainstorming. Um, you can set up the privacy, so that the students may either see themselves all typing at the same time, or they have to be approved by me, which I do for the brainstorms, to see, I challenge them, say which group people have the most new vocab words, or things like that, but they remember it from the past. Um, this is an example of one that one of my classes did, um, last week, before we started our new unit on school vocabulary. So I gave them about two minutes, um, one person per group was to describe, and away they went. So you can see the differences between each of the groups, um, the range of vocabulary that they retain from the past. Um, and for them, it's really fun to just get together in a little group, and, you know, see if you can get, I have the typing for them too, so, you know, getting the typing done is definitely good. Um, for me, it's great, because I can revisit this. We used to do brainstorming and just write it on the board, and, you know, when we had to use the board for something else, the brainstorm, we went away, but now the brainstorms are permanent, we can go back to them, talk about, you know, how vocabulary has improved. When we finish our unit, I'm gonna do another wall, and see what new words come up this time around, uh, but I can guarantee you that the list will be twice as long. So that's just a really nice way for me to see and track their growth and improvement, um, over the course of the unit, as well as what they brought with them to Spanish two words. Um, so we've done a bunch of different Padlets, I tell everyone, people can comment on them, what's been left to, and happening in class.
Yeah, um, this has actually been a very awesome tool for us to just, uh, get our brains jogging on what we're gonna be learning, and, you know, just really refresh our brains on what's, what's happening. Um, now, with this, we have four to five people in the group, and we're just yelling off answers, and, you know, if one person forgot a word, and then another person will remember that moment of that person yelling it out, and that brain will, and then your brain will then take that information, and really, you know, when, when you're looking for that word, it's gonna pull up that experience, so it's been a very, very tool for, you know, enhancing vocabulary and comprehension.
A great collaboration to continue. Um, that is Padlet. And then the other tool that I've been using is Socratic recording. Um, and this is a way for me to informally assess student knowledge, again, prior to beginning the unit, I've done it a lot during or at the end of the unit. Um, and so for me, I can either manage quizzes and create new ones, um, based on different units, so I have here some saved ones. This is the adjective quiz that Mateo will do a demonstration with, and you can all see what it looks like on the student end and on the teacher end. So for me, all I have to do is just create some mutual answer, multiple choice questions, I check out which one is right, and then save. So this was during our emotions unit, just test midway to see how the students were doing. Um, and then we would go from the dumb quiz, I would just start ones, and we'll let Mateo pace himself through this. So I can either pace it myself, or the, um, the students can pace it on their own. I can also show live results. So I don't know if you wanna try and hop in. Alright, so Mateo, I can see he's in the room, um, I don't know if he's entered. Where's that line from? Okay, Mayama Mateo, so I know exactly who's in the room, at what time, I can see how far they've come on their progress. Are you on, do you have connection that they can see?
I'm here. Just. Can you just wake up the other?
The nice thing is that when we, when the students are working, they get immediate feedback, because the answers will pop up as soon as they're responding, so they, if they don't remember it right away, it triggers them right away after they typed in their response. Um, and if we were just to end the activity right now, I can download the report and see how all of my students did, what answers they got right, what answers they got wrong. I can meet with them if they wanna go over their results, give them feedback, um, and better prepare them for quizzes, uh, for other short-term assignments or projects coming up. So, I mean, that has been a great way for me to just kind of see where they're all at in the middle of the unit, um, and then, you know, give them a little bit more feedback throughout each of our, our communities, so. I mean, maybe if you wanna show them. So the other project that Mateo was gonna explain right now, um, is a nationalities project that we did last month with ThingLink, which is basically a virtual collage. In the past, I'd always had my students take a Spanish-speaking country out of a hat, they would get construction paper, and encyclopedias, and this and that. Um, we decorate the room with all the flags, which I still have up, but this year, everyone having their own device, I decided to do a digital class project for this guy. Uh, so they went on ThingLink, they uploaded a picture of the country's flag in the background, and then what they did was add little tags, um, to give information about, you know, what the flag symbols represented, what the colors represented, they could embed audio, they were all required to embed at least two sound files, one of which had the of them speaking. Um, many of them found, you know, the national anthem on YouTube, or things like that, different clips, um, for them to listen to, and then, um, the students all viewed each other's projects. I put all the links on the Google Doc in our class folder at the end of the unit, so then we spent half of the class with them, listening to each other's projects, writing notes down, um, and being able to take away more information at once at their own pace as well, so that was really nice.
Now, as she was saying, with how the kids, we used to use posters, and we have to do these drawings, and it would take a lot longer, and with ThingLink, we can get straight down to the information, and start learning it from there. Um, now, this requirement required that we had a sound file of us speaking the, um, the country name, and also, a little, you know, an external link of some information about the country. Um, and this just really was a great experience, because it was easy, and it was a cool way to show the flag, explain the flag without, you know, messy drawing from our students.
I don't know, so this is what Mateo's flag looked like. Um, this was, so they had to, one of the requirements was that they had to describe all the tags, or they got their information in English language websites, but they had to put into their own words and kind of present it to, um, all of us, had a Spanish two level instead of, you know, something super complicated, so we have the national anthem. Oops. And...
So they had really a good time, I think, embedding their own files in there, they could listen to each other, um, they had to study where they got the photo from, um, talking about, again, where, um, what all of the different things represented in the flag, to learn a little bit more about each of the countries' histories, and politics, and culture, and things like that.
Great.
Very good.
That's great. Thank you.
Any questions for any of us? Why are they recording for students having digital flipflops, you know, so we can try to...
Well, I think colleges are looking for that, I mean, I think that's the main reason, but, I mean, we're trying to teach students to be responsible online, so, is that saying that goes, if someone searches you online, and they find nothing, what does that say about you? I don't know, you know, or the alternative is they search you online and find stuff they shouldn't find. So we're, we're hoping that, you know, whether employers down the road, or two years, or whether it's, like I said, for colleges, they search you, they're gonna find blog posts that you've written, comments, that you've written, other people's blog posts work like this, if you decide that this is all private, then you decide to post it publicly, things that kind of better the, I hate to say the internet, but you know, make things better that are learned from other people, so, you know, kids, students, we've seen many bad students, and they, you know, try to teach them, and if these things don't go away, you can't get a really quick, you know, erase button. So that's kind of the direction we're kinda leaning towards.
Eric Scott, our flag director, has actually meant a lot to the team, because coaching at college level actually go on tour, who may approve, and I think it's helped a lot about, you know, the type of student they might be, student athlete they might be, and how they, uh, what their digital look like. I think what I've seen a big difference, you know, and seven years ago, you know, at the point, is really what our students know now about what a digital tool is, and what good digital citizenship means. Um, I remember there was a time where we weren't quite certain what meant to go online, and, and wouldn't mean nothing goes away, you know, we brought it up, reading it over and, um, seeing we're doing a lot of work around cyberbullying, and the students really start to realize, oh my goodness, you're right, nothing does kind of go away. Um, so what we're definitely seeing now in students becoming very, very into high schools, they're much more aware of what's out there, where they should be going, and where they shouldn't be going, and certainly, uh, you know, how easy it is for an employer, and you know, to go online and find out.
You, you didn't mention as a challenge, if you were having trouble with the firewall, or people breaching it, or anything, so has that pretty not been a big issue?
No, not any, one externally. Um, I think maybe we're having...
Might be too strong.
...maneuvering within.
Oh, yeah, so very strong, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's the other way around.
Yeah. But, uh, no, there hasn't been any concerns about, uh, security or, you know...
Sorry, just thinking about the digital citizenship, you know, so all the students, all the students spent time this summer doing online modules, we did not allow them to bring their devices here, until they completed these online modules, that we created, you know, information from commonsensemedia.org, which is a fantastic free site for, you know, for TV relief, not just internet. Um, so all the students had to kind of complete all this before they could bring in their devices here, so, you know, we'll kind of probably do the same thing next year, but we'll, um, love.
Okay.
I just wanna thank the, the students and staff for coming tonight, and also, all of our teachers and staff working really hard in this initiative. I mean, it's, it's a lot, it's a huge undertaking, they've really worked very, very hard the last couple of months, I just wanna thank you for that.
It's mentioned that initially it's for work, which looks, we see it reducing your program, wants to establish community, and she said, I think, I mean, a lot, like, in the grade, and a lot of it is easier, maybe, I don't know. And, and some parts, but I think that any time you start something new, there's a lot of setup, like, it kind of even, I think, students can test you, even just logging in, and what does that mean, and what does that entail, and it's becoming much more seamless, and, I mean, in terms of grading, I think, doing the digital, there, there are some joys to that, and that's why, it's still not as easy.
I think there's still a process of downloading content, making content, so once they do that, it's there, that's what they're gonna have to do.
Right.
Still, yeah, I'm just still, I'm saying, I'm saying that, right.
I think the more things that we're exposed to, as well, to our, um, edtech teacher course, and just by talking to each other, you know, there were some ideas that just come to me kind of on the spot this year, and I'm like, oh, I can just take what I used to do on paper, and now make it visual. So I think the more we're exposed to all of it, it's definitely helped make the process easier for me, so.
That's great. Great.
Do you reasonably think you could expand this to the whole school, or is it like a grade at a time kind of thing?
Neil, I have a part of it, of course. So, you know, the big picture here is obviously something like, uh, we want to do my people, uh, with, and upon this, but, uh, what's happening right now, obviously, is we're putting the product in a training bar for teachers, so, and we started sort of questioning the training class paper. This fall, we started working on sophomore teachers in preparation for next year, so they're gonna have this question class. So, you know, the big question here is, is it matter of, well, you know, how quickly can we get the teachers that are left trained? Uh, and can we do it the right way? So, um, that's something that we've probably got to figure out over the next couple of months. I like the base that we've got, it's a product, just, you know, I wanna do a faster, the right place, um, and at the risk of really, you know, compromising the amount of work and preparation it takes to teach in this type of environment, um, we just have to be really thoughtful about, you know, how quickly we can get to the right level. Again, I'm pretty confident it's gonna happen at some point, because...
I mean, is it basically gonna be ninth grade going to 10th, 10th to 11th, and 12th, is it gonna be four years, you think, probably?
Well, I don't know, that's, that's, that's what we have to figure out. That'll be, uh, I guess the longest one, and, you know, the question that we expedite, uh, so that it doesn't...
Yeah, aside from professional development, is there, uh, are we gonna need to dramatically increase the bandwidth, and you just called it from that, you can't, we doubled it on the users.
Yeah, that's, that's...
We need it actually for next year as well, we need the bandwidth increase for next year, just with what we have.
We'll let you get to it, don't miss a kickoff.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you, thank you all.
At some point, maybe this spring.
Come back.
Yeah, that would be great, yeah, that would be excellent, yeah.
Sure.
Do some more testing.
How you think it'll roll out, and...
Thank you, thanks for coming, Tim.
Yeah, I mean, it makes it long to do, you know, I, I think it'd be so cool to do some...
Yeah, anytime you want to swing by during the day, honestly, we could get you in.
I would love to see that.
I would too.
Really new. It was surprising, somebody said it was...
Yeah, even the pictures are amazing to see, 'cause I do think there's that perspective that, oh gosh, they're gonna all be sitting there on their phone, and no one is collaborating, and to see that is great, that they all had pencils in their hands, they were working together. I love that.
Oh, good.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We also have a senior who's gonna be documenting the whole implementation, who's gonna start at the end of, probably the beginning of, of January, and then all through the spring, documenting what's going on in the classroom, so we have a video of it as well, so we can really see what we're doing.
The next item on the new business is the future school committee meeting schedule, which I think relates to the availability of this room for us.
Right, uh, Mr. Chair, in your packet, you had a, a schedule of the planning board in their, in their schedule for, in the ZBA for their meetings over the next few months. Uh, I guess we have to decide how we wanna approach this. We can, I think, one of three things, we can continue to have the meetings in this room, and have the live broadcast, but have some issues around the rebroadcast. We can look at moving our meetings to town hall, and have it in the same space that the board of selectmen have their meeting. Um, definitely different equipment, and less equipment failure in that particular environment. Or three, we can really put in a capital expense and upgrade some of the technology we have in this room, uh, to make it useful for us for the rebroadcasting, et cetera. So I, I think it's been an ongoing issue the last couple of years in this room, and the last two meetings we've had have been broadcast live, but not been able to be recorded and rebroadcast. So that's kind of the issue that we have to discuss, and Mike Sullivan was very open with us, using that space downstairs if we wanted to do that, but the thing there, it, we may have to change some of our meeting dates, which I know we've, we planned on in advance, so certainly, Tim and I talked about that, but we thought it would be important to bring it to the entire committee for discussion.
If you were to, if we were to make an investment in the equipment that's needed to record, can that be used any other way? Is there an advantage to that being used for the school, during the school day, or are there any other advantages, or would it just be for this purpose?
No, I think it would be, probably be incorporated into the, the classroom as well, let me use this room for, I'm sure it would be. Um, the list that we got a couple of years ago, it appears to be a little over $10,000 investment, without even... without even going through every, all the materials and all of the equipment. So it's whether we want to make that initial investment now, or do we want to look at moving our meetings for the rest of the year and taking a look at that.
I guess I have a similar question. This isn't, I mean, this isn't the school committee room, it's a classroom, right?
Correct.
Right.
So the, the use that it's designed for, I assume would be, I mean, they're not just, you know, doing live broadcasts in this room, but the idea is to be producing...
Correct.
Content. And so if they can't record, you tell me they can't record during the regular classroom day?
I'm told they can. It's something to do with the connection to Cable 8 and how that works. I'm not positive how it all works, but really, it's a connection piece to Cable 8.
Produce it live and record at the same time.
I think that's what, that's what it is.
So do you, is, does it impact any educa, like, would the lack of investment here impact the education? Or just, is it just us that's impacted?
I think it's just us. But if we were to get the, the additional equipment, it would certainly enhance what happens here during the day.
But couldn't they, so the problem, the issue is really just that they, you can't live broadcast and...
And record.
And record, but, I mean, I'm not convinced we have a great audience. I mean, our Nielsen ratings are pretty low to begin with. But, I mean, isn't it just as easy just to switch over to the record piece and not expect people to tune in on Monday night necessarily?
As opposed to just live?
With Dance with Stars, but they can get us on Tuesday night at one in the morning or something like that.
Okay. I can check into that and see if that's an option.
You can do either or.
Right, so, yeah.
So instead of doing it live, just do the recorder?
Yeah, if you want to see us live, you're welcome to come on down.
Right, okay.
Right.
But if you can't come on down, I mean, if you're inclined to watch us, and it's important enough to you, I think most people, the rare occasion where it's important enough, people do come down.
Right.
So if they want to know what's going on and can't make it down, and that's, you know, we do, it's an important service that we provide, then I think, you know, the live broadcast is far secondary to the recorded broadcast.
I also know that what the ones that have been recorded and rebroadcast, they rebroadcast throughout the week. I mean, you can...
Multiple times, right.
Yeah.
Many times.
I know they...
So if that's...
I've seen my face on there way too many times. I was flipping through the gym, I was at the gym, and all of a sudden, it goes to my face, like, oh, get rid of that, I'm watching myself.
So if that's not an option, then what would you, what would you folks want to do?
If that's not...
I think, I think it is, but I'm not positive. I don't want to say it is, and then...
If it's not, neither or, right.
I think it'd be important to know what's more about what the cost is and more about how that really benefits student learning. Because I, again, I think we open our meetings, we open our doors, we're not really obligated to do much more than that. We take good, you know, Kathy takes meticulous minutes. So I think it'd be great if we were, people could watch us live and rebroadcast, but it's not a big, a big enough priority that we would take, you know, the business of the schools to another part of the town, or that, at least from my perspective, or that we would invest a lot of money. I also think there's, at least from my, my prior experience, there's often a lot of grant money associated with this kind of stuff, you know, creating television initiatives and things like that, you know, down the line. You can't get that in a week or two.
Sure. So what if I check into that with the Didi and see if that's something that we can do, whether it can be recorded and then rebroadcast versus just having it live and not be rebroadcast?
That would be good.
Okay, I'll check into that. I'll get back to you next meeting.
Thanks.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the FY15 budget update, we are moving right along. We've been having, Charlie and I have been having meetings with the principals and the content specialists and going through their budgets. We're, we have three more, I think, tomorrow, which would be our last three. We started last week. You know, people are doing a great job, they're presenting their budgets, there's, there's nothing that is surprising. I think people understand the climate that we're in, and they want what's best for their, their program and their school, but they understand the limitations of public school budgets. So that's been great. We've been kind of grilling them through their, through their presentation of what does this mean, what does that mean, and been very impressed by the way they've been handling that. What we're doing going forward is Thursday evening, meeting with the liaisons of the Warren Committee to kind of get a sense of what they're thinking and what the, the budget looks like for FY15. And then, believe it or not, on our next meeting, December 16th, will be the first presentation of the FY15 budget. So it's quick, very, very quick. But I think it's, so far, it's been a good process. You know, Charlie's done a real nice job organizing it so that it's timely, and, and then we'll, we'll get into that process and then begin negotiations, I'm sure, after the first of the year. So again, that will be one of the big budget drivers in FY15 that we don't really know about at this point, but we'll plan as best we can. The, the other item, going right into this, is, Tim had asked me to talk a little bit about the school site council FY15 discussion that we had a couple of weeks ago in a little more detail, so you get a sense of what the site councils are thinking. And if I could just, for a minute, just go through some of the slides that we, we talked about. On page two, we looked at the FY14 budget, excuse me, in the, our current school year, and talked a little bit about some of the three components of the budget, the chapter 70, local contribution, and the other, which I always talk about, the, the things that are very important. So if you look at that, the district generates almost $3 million a year outside of local contribution in chapter 78. So I have a note there that although the budget is, is 28 million plus, it actually costs over 31 million to run the school district as you see it today. And then a little bit about the people expenditure that I know has been something that folks have talked about. Charlie went over the budget calendar, and then we talked a little bit about the budget drivers and the fact that, you know, 80% of every school district's budget is the instructional and personnel costs, and the fact that all CBAs are up in June, so we went a little bit through that. Our contract with our transportation company is up as well, so we need to look at, at what that's going to be. And then, of course, special education is always a driver because of the in-district, out-of-district, and then the transportation piece. So had a real good conversation about that with the school site councils. Looked at some of the assumptions that we made going into this budget process, that in terms of federal grants, chapter 70 enrollment, et cetera. Looked at some of the budget priorities that we discussed at the school committee level and also with the leadership committee, what are some of the things that, that we feel are important going into FY15 budget. And then asked the school site councils to take a few minutes to discuss this with their group, and they, you know, what are your budget priorities in your building, district-wide, why are they needed, and what other areas that weren't discussed today do you think need to be either added or subtracted in the budget? So had some real good conversation around that, and then they reported out. Some of the issues or some of the priorities they reported out at the end of this meeting, Memorial School, their focus for FY15, full-day kindergarten, additional support staff for interventions in both mathematics and language arts, and Wi-Fi. Memorial, like the other schools, have very limited Wi-Fi in the school, it's really only in the office area. So that was a focus that they wanted to, that council wanted to look at. The Wheelock School, they were talking about math programs, because I know we're kind of thinking about going to a new, a new program. There's a committee together that's going to meet this week, and we're looking at whether we're going to do a new math program in FY15 or develop units that will go into FY16. We're not really sure where we are, but that committee's going to meet and come with a recommendation. Professional development also at Wheelock School, and again, Wi-Fi, where there's only just that one hub area in, with the, with the offices. Dale Street School, again, that math is a common theme here, looking at a math coach K-5. So that's someone that would not only be a curriculum person, but someone that would work in the classrooms, talk to teachers about math instruction, model some of those lessons for them, and help them with integration. So that was Dale Street, but also other schools talked about that. The writing, I think four and five tend to get hypersensitive on the writing, because that's when you look at the long composition and then casts and those types of things. So that was a focus they were looking at. And then also technology upgrades in Dale Street. So one of the things that we talked about around Dale Street is, if, if we do technology upgrades there, knowing that the plan in the future is to build a new school, I mean, that's what, what Tim's are working on, and certainly everyone's been talking about, that any, any technology we put in there would be portable in nature, meaning that if we have a hub, we'll pull the wires through with our people. We're not going to pay an outside company to do, which we normally would do that. We'll pull the wires, so we're not losing money on labor costs there, we have our own folks do that, and we'll set up the hubs that we can remove and then put in a different school if and when that, that new school happens. So we're trying to be thoughtful about that, but we don't want to be, we don't want to keep saying, we'll wait till the new school is built. Because if we wait till the new school is built, then we're looking at two different groups of kids going through Dale Street without that technology. So we're trying to be a little proactive in that, and I know that's something that, that those folks have really been asking for, and when I met with a lot of the elementary teachers this summer, that was a real common theme of the lack of technology and Wi-Fi in those buildings. So we've tried to, to focus that this year and looking at that in FY15 as well.
Is it, is it realistic to have to get, I mean, if you're buying, you know, portable or reusable equipment for Dale Street, I mean, if you, theoretically, if you build a new school, it's going to be a lot more efficient to build something in there than...
Absolutely. So we would put it in Memorial or over at Wheelock, or if, if, for instance, if Blake needed new hubs based on their expansion of their program, we put it there. So it's something that, and Owen's great, I mean, he knows exactly what to get that's going to last X amount of years, that we'll be able to reuse in a different school. So that, that's, that's kind of the plan right now. Professional development in, in, in all of those buildings are important. The middle school, interesting, so their, their real focus is they want to make sure we can maintain the, the cluster model we have right now at the middle school. Their biggest concern, it was the big concern over the summer as well, is the declining enrollment. So as they see, if they have 200 kids going in from one to the next, and they're looking at 140, 150 coming up, you know, they're concerned with that whole cluster model, because it's an expensive model, but it's, it's a great model for kids. So that was one of their concerns. And then continued the professional development and technology initiatives. High school, want to make sure that we can add additional science course, AP course, and then we need to add a Mandarin IV, because there are kids that are ready for Mandarin IV next year. And then, of course, the high school drops the biggest bomb of all when they, when they say the new turf field, which is needed within a year, which is a, a huge amount, certainly, but we'll, we'll work on that with different avenues, and certainly it won't be a, be a part of that. But originally, it, it was a 10-year turf, next year is its 10th year.
Is it 10?
The new turf's a 15 years, there, there are shelf lefts. So we had to do some repairs this year in the, in the summertime. There were parts of it that were coming up, and we had to have re-sown down, so that, there is some wear and tear. You know, and you don't really notice it until you go on it, and then if you see, if you go to an away game with other schools that have a newer turf, you see the difference. It's a huge difference. So that's something that's kind of looming that we need to take a look at, maybe not for FY15, but certainly in, in the coming year or two, take a look at. So I thought that, I thought the councils were great. I mean, they were very thoughtful, had some really good conversation in their groups, and, and were ready to, to share that. So I was, I was pleased by that.
Tim, did the turf go down before this renovation was done? I think it was, right?
You know, it was, I don't remember the exact timing, but it must have been, right? Because this is not 10 years ago.
I think it did.
Is it reimbursed? Will it probably be reimbursed?
No.
It was done with...
And it wouldn't be, and it wasn't part of the project here. I mean, that'll just be something we have to think about, because it, that was done by private fundraising last time, so.
Yeah, that's what we were just thinking, like, isn't there something with fundraising or grants or things like that for...
I don't know about grants, but there's fundraising, you know. But that's, that's, that's not going to be reflected in this year's budget.
Right, right. It was just something they wanted to get out of there.
Yeah, yeah, fundraising.
So is, is this year's budget going to reflect those priorities that, as far as the one we get presented?
Right.
How much does a new turf cost? Like, what are we...
Half a million.
Half a million to 700,000 a penny. You know, the infrastructure is there from the last one, so it should be pulling it up and putting it down, in theory.
You don't have to put any bleachers and things like that.
Right, right.
So that would be a capital project request, anyway, if it did.
Right. And then just for, just a recognition, just a few things I want to share. First of all, I want to thank the Coalition for a great night, Friday night for trivia night. I'm sure it went very, very well in terms of what they...
We missed two questions.
Two questions out of the entire, entire one. And we, we bet the whole house on the second question, and we lost.
Which is very sad, because when I asked my second grader and fifth grader, the economist plan that you could see within, both of them said Saturn, so the teachers in Medfield are doing a good job. Let me just not say Saturn.
I learned that about Mary Ann. Or Jeff, when it comes to music.
When it comes to music, he had a music now.
Random music in my head.
From Pro Gym to Carrie Underwood.
Right, right. He had the gamut.
Is that going to be played on KLE at all?
No, it wasn't. It was...
I don't think there was anyone recording that.
It was...
Let's hope there was no one recording that, because...
Especially the second shift, yeah.
Yeah, the second shift, a little livelier.
So I haven't heard any totals in terms of how much they raised, but it was great. What a wonderful turnout for the first event, that they, the first time they've done trivia night, so it was just great. So I want to thank them for that. Last week, we also had, had some of our teachers and one of our principals present at the iPad Summit in Boston, which is just a great honor, because it just recognizes some of the work that our, our teachers in the middle school and Nat have been doing in this area. So Nat, Diane Hervath, Seth Heilerstein, and Jason Heim all presented. And then Nat was actually asked to be on a panel with experts from across the country, principals, to discuss the implementation of iPads in schools. So that was great. I actually tweeted out a picture that someone has sent out of Nat there. It was great. So, you know, Nat was excited about that, and, and he works real hard and is committed to this whole process, so I was real happy for him that, that happened.
What percentage of the schools, I don't know, in Massachusetts or in this area, are where we are with this?
I think everyone is dipping their toes in like we're doing. I really do. I think some places have, have gone at it in a different way, in which they've purchased lots of iPads and implemented them that way. I, I think what we saw tonight and, and what was done, you know, last year and the year before, is really the way to do it. It's really to make sure teachers have the training, number one, and then to do it in a way that, again, we hear all the time, thoughtful, but it really is thoughtful and well-planned out, so that it's, it's not, as they sometimes like to say, ready, fire, aim. You know, it's, it was well-thought-out and, and done in, in the correct sequence, so that it's successful for kids. I think that's, that's what we're seeing right now. Again, there's glitches, and there will be, but I think it's, it's done really well. I would say everyone around the area is doing something with it.
Some of the people that are building new schools are getting them paid and then reimbursed, because they're, so they're getting one-to-one, like Natick High Schools, or everyone got an iPad or a laptop, one or the other.
They did, yeah, they did.
So we, we have to live within kind of the, what we're dealing with, both physically in the building with the Wi-Fi and all that, and, and the hardware.
A couple of other things, our, our teachers from China returned today. They went back, so they're still traveling as we speak. But they had a great three weeks, and we, one of the things that Louise had wanted me to talk about was when they came over to Dale Street for the day, I brought them over to Memorial for a few hours and a tour because I hadn't seen the smaller kids, and we spent some time over there and they did some map skills work with the little kids. And, and as always, kindergarten kids are great. They asked them questions like, do you eat anything? You know, those kind of questions that they asked, and, and they got a kick out of it. So, that was great. And they got to see some, some map skills of China and the kids got a sense of where, where they were in the world versus China. And then went over to Dale Street and actually went into the Mandarin classes, which was great, because the Mandarin, the kids, and we're only in, you know, November, and the kids were able to communicate through songs with, with the Chinese teachers through Mandarin. It was just a wonderful thing to see. I tweeted out some pictures of that too because it was great. It was a great experience. Also, in Dale Street, they're doing the, the Coalition for Courage, on which they raised money for Africa, so they've been very, very, the whole month of November, they're doing that, been very active in that. And last week, they had a grade level challenge in which the fifth graders won the challenge of how many silver coins you can bring in to support the effort. So, really pleased about that. It's, it's really, their, their, their focus for the month of November is compassion, service, and generosity, so it fits in real well with that, with that value. So, we're, we're happy with that. And then lastly, in the high school, again, the Chinese teachers returned, but I wanted to congratulate the Theater Society on their successful program last week, both Friday and Saturday night, did a really great job. And then congratulations to all of our fall athletes for a wonderful season. It's, it's why I wanted to go back to a K-12 and got to see a lot of great athletics and in great events with the high school, so it was wonderful. So, I want to thank all of them for that. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Great. So, it's our time for public input, which, unless you have something to add to the communication. Does anyone on the school committee have anything they want to?
Just the, the trivia night, I thought was great. It was, it's, it was impressive to go to another Coalition event where you see, like, and I know people on the Coalition that the meetings that go into these things, you know, you go in one night, you show up and have a good time.
Right.
But the amount of work and like, it's like, I said, it's like a fine-tuned machine. Everybody is so organized, everybody has their jobs and they work so well together and so hard that it's really nice to see because they, they do work really hard. And there's a lot of meetings that go into just one event and planning that goes into that.
I think it was a bigger success than they thought, for sure.
Right.
Oh, yeah, they had a waitlist, they said, and it was, yeah, they had a waitlist they packed, so it was good.
A waitlist for teams or a waitlist for participants?
For teams, yeah.
For people to come to watch?
Yeah, it was hard to watch. It wasn't much, it wasn't much of a spectator.
The place was filled with cameras of people doing the...
But I, I had friends who just moved to town last year and they assumed, God bless you, that this was like the fifth or seventh, because there were so much interest, so many people, you know, excited to do it from the moment it was announced, they just assumed this was a town tradition and assume it is now, but...
And so well organized, you know, flawless way it went off. It was great.
Right, and that was the first time they've done that particular thing, so it was, it was really nice how smooth they went. You know, there are always a couple of bumps in the road when, the first time you do something, so, but it was, it was great.
Okay. And with that, we've got the future agenda items, which are listed. I do want to come to the committee and sort of update them on the Dale Street building project, what's happening there. And with that, I think we'll have a motion to adjourn. The next meeting is the 16th. We've moved the second meeting to the 16th, December 16th, so let's go quick. All in favor? Aye.
This program was made possible through the generous support of your Medfield friends and neighbors, folks just like you. And thanks for watching.